Court will come to order. It is Monday, March the 10th, 2025. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kirk County Court, Commissioner's Court is now in session. And if you would, please rise for the prayer and the pledge, which we led by Commissioner Harris.
Please bow your heads. Lord, thank you for all that you provide us. Let us make decisions based upon your wisdom. Please guide us, Lord. We place this meeting in your hands. We place our hearts and our minds in your hands so that you may direct us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. As is our tradition, first item on our agenda is to receive public input. It is very important to us to hear what you have to say to us, what you want us to know. We do this every, every regular Commissioner's Court meeting. We ask that whoever, whoever would like to address the court, do it from the podium. This is all being televised on YouTube and you'll find it on our website so you can go back and see it again or even record it yourself. And we ask that you identify yourself, the precinct that you live in, and limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. If what you want to speak to us about is an agenda item, we ask that you wait until that agenda item is called and we'll address it at that time. So is there anyone that would like to address the court?
Yes.
Okay.
I think she was here before.
Okay. Now have your, have your form. And you are?
Patricia Kankel Fitz.
Okay. Please go. This is Patricia Kankel Fitz.
That's her.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Kankel Fitz. I guess I'm in precinct, precinct three. I live at 657 O'Callaghan Drive, Kerrville. I'm an animal lover. I have owned fish, rabbits, birds, hamsters, and dogs in my life. I volunteered at the Wisconsin Humane Society, taking puppies and kitties to senior centers for the people to pet and hug. I presently have a 75-pound rescue dog from Kirk County Animal Control. I love him to bits, but we have a problem here in Kirk County. It is feral cats. They went rampant in our neighborhoods. People feed them and do not care for them. Many people also let their pets, cats out the door in the morning and do not let them come back in until nighttime. County Ordinance 1831A states, "All cats and dogs excluding community cats shall be kept under restraint." County Ordinance 1831D states, "It is unlawful for a person to feed feral or to provide food for feral cats." A big problem is also this idea of the Big Fix or Community Cats, as called in the ordinance. These feral cats are rounded up and neutered and then released back into the neighborhoods. That does nothing to solve the problem of too many feral cats. These fixed cats by nature are predators, are killing birds, rabbits, squirrels, geckos, and many other small animals and bugs. These feral cats leave fecal matter all over the place. They transmit taxoplasmosis, cat scratch fever, and are susceptible to bird flu and rabies. I feel it is cruel to let feral cats run free as they can be attacked by other animals, hit by cars, and are left to die slow painful deaths of diseases. A feral cat only lives two to five years compared to house cats who can live up to 15 years or more. I don't know how the idea of having community cats protected by ordinances came about. These cats are killing machines. This designation of community cats needs to be struck from our county ordinance 1831A. Kerrville was recently named Bird City, Texas. It is estimated that cats kill 1.3 to 4 billion birds a year in the United States according to the 2025 Catster Editorial Team. Most of this killing is done by feral cats. I feed birds, feral cats come in my yard and kill my birds. Let us give our birds in Kerrville a chance of life and round up feral cats. Feral cats also attract other wild animals as well as other unfixed cats to these feeding areas, thus increasing the possibility of spreading diseases. So fixing feral cats is not the problem, solve the problem of too many feral cats in Kirk County. If there was a pack of 25 dogs in my neighborhood running free, there, as there are 25 cats in my neighborhood, people would be up in arms and want to call Animal Control and have them rounded up. Why are cats allowed to run free? A community-wide effort is needed to educate people to surrender their undrafted cats to Animal Control and not dump them in some other neighborhood. People need to restrain family cats and not let them roam free. House cats too well inside as, is, as inside cats. We need to catch all feral cats in our county and rehome them. Thank you for your time.
We can't offer any output back to you, but as the presiding officer, and I mean this very respectfully, ma'am, your presentation was out of order. It should have been addressed when we called the agenda item at 1.1.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Your presentation was out of order. I asked that it be saved until the agenda item was called and it's item 1.14. The other three speakers that want to speak are items 1.14. And we ask that you wait until that agenda item is called before speaking. That's number one that was out of order. Number two, I asked that you limit your remarks to three minutes. You did not. And then the last thing I will advise the public as the presiding officer of the county. The county does not have ordinances. We do not have ordinance authority at all. Anything, any ordinance that you're reading from is a city ordinance. It is not a county ordinance. So with that, is there anyone that wants to speak to the court about something other than an item, an agenda item? There being none, we'll proceed on to the mistress comments. And I'm gonna switch it around this time. We'll start with four.
I'm not gonna say a whole lot because I know we got some windy people up here.
That's right.
I'm gonna do a, make a shameless personal comment and wish my wife a happy anniversary today.
All right.
No, we need some rain. The, the burn bans are lifted right now.
No, they're in place.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me.
Don't confuse us.
Yeah.
We knew what you were thinking.
Yeah. But we need some, some, we need some rain and put that in your prayers. We need some desperately and not just, you know, the, the April showers sometimes we get that hairs everything over. We need some underground. That's where we're hurting, you know? The others just kind of cosmetic sometimes, but we need some underground. So think about that. Think about what will help us. We're always in need, struggling in a drought, it seems like. And as these, there's a couple bills going through Austin right now that we need help with that will give us a little bit more say in how developers come and do their business here. And Senator Flores has one and there's a couple I'm going through, but give them a call, tell them we need some help to curb the onslaught we're getting from developers coming here and wanting to drill wells every 10 acres. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, burn ban is still in effect. I only signed one exclusion for the fire department to do a training burn. We had two light rains. I could use a little bit more in these Kirk, light rains over the last two weeks. I want to thank the court for attending the hot tax and those folks that were there to attend the hot tax meeting as we've heard from multiple sides on a issue. And had a good meeting with tech staff. We're looking at Highway 27 and Wilson Creek Road. Otherwise, you might see it on the map as Roan Road as a possible improvement for turn lane. Animal Control did have some good meetings on animal control, specifically about feral cats with both our city ordinance person and our animal control. And then I went to go see Billy Jeans along the river where there is a lot of feral cats. And we'll reschedule another meeting when a gentleman is feeling better. Thank you to Kirk County Sheriff's Office. I've enrolled in the Citizens Academy with several other folks to learn a little bit more about what they do. Looking forward to ride longs and all kinds of other fun stuff. Sheriff and Jason.
You're volunteering to be the class leader, sir.
I really tried to hide on that. Yeah, I look forward to it. Thank you. 911 good tour on the 911 and actually we saw a fire. Our largest fire to date was actually when we were at the 911 center. So we got to see it fully exercised. They do a great job.
One of us got to see the fire itself.
Yeah, he, he took off to go fight it and I caught up much later on a, on a, on a pretty large fire at a ranch. Troy Kinvica from Bandera stopped by, a commissioner, and talked about some of the issues they have with their four in place battery energy storage systems, four, and their one very large 2700 acre solar field, which they're trying to deal with in the planning phase. So yeah, they're knocking at the door of the SRPC and we'll have to wait for that later as they, they come together as a court. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit about that meeting that we attended and, and big thanks to Commissioner Holt for organizing it. And of course, then the stock show organized that meeting on the hotel occupancy tax. Representative Wes Verdel, as mentioned, was there, so he was able to hear both sides of the story. It's typically what, what we experience is the vocal minority puts a lot of information out there. Unfortunately, in this case, it's a lot of bad information. But this was an opportunity for Wes Verdel to hear the other side of it, actually both sides, because there were folks who were against the hot tax as well there. But I gave a presentation on the indoor arena improvements that are needed and that presentation is available on my website, www.richpaces.com. It's one of the posts that I put out there some time back, associated with the Kirk County Patriots meeting on January 27th. But, you know, we did hear overwhelmingly from folks involved in the stock show, FFA, 4H, and others in support of the indoor arena improvements and using the hotel occupancy tax to fund them. Alternatives to the hot were proposed such as another bond proposition, fundraising, or seeking funds from the EDC. I just want everybody to be aware, all those options were considered. But they all substantially delay the project or cause it to be done in small pieces, both of which add to the cost and also delay the economic benefits of having improvements to that indoor arena and having a lot more events and bigger events. And of course, there, there was also a suggestion that we do another bond. Well, bond propositions take time. They may or may not pass. And again, that's just delay and it adds to the county's debt. We already have 30 million in debt, really don't want anymore. And then to pay the debt, there's a good chance we might have to actually raise property taxes. So I'm certainly against all those things. One of the suggestions was fundraising. Yeah, that's, that's fine. Who's gonna do it though? That's an enormous amount of effort to undertake a fundraiser for 1.8 million dollars, which is the amount of money we need to finish the indoor arena improvements. So I'm not sure who's gonna do that and I'll give you an analogy. Yes, I'm in the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department and we do a lot of fundraising every year. We continue to do it, but we're lucky if we raise $50,000. That won't get you anywhere close to paying off 1.8 million dollars. And, and in fact, the only way, you know, we hadn't had a new truck in probably a decade because we couldn't afford it. And you can't get a bank or anybody to give you a loan when you have no guaranteed income. So we, we asked for an ESD, Emergency Services District, and it was put forward into an election. It passed. It wasn't, wasn't overwhelming, but it passed and that creates a tax that the people within the area serviced by the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department pay. As a result of that, we now have two state-of-the-art trucks, one big water tender and a new fire engine. And, you know, it has improved our response time and our ability to put out fires tremendously, which benefits the people. So yeah, taxes there, people in the ESD area have to pay it, but we'd never get those new trucks and that new equipment without it. And, and that's kind of an analogy to this one. You can talk about fundraising, but without this tax, it's not gonna happen. All the remaining improvements will just be put on hold to lord knows when. Okay, and, and since that meeting, I've seen a bunch of emails. Well, not a bunch, actually three. But one of the comments was about, "We spend too much money on outside counsel." Well, I agree with that, but you know, that's something this court has to manage. We will have to spend money with outside counsel. But I ask the public to bear in mind that there's a big difference between what we budget for any item and what we actually spend. And outside counsel is certainly other than that. We have to have a budget because we never know if we're gonna have a lawsuit or what we're gonna have to spend a lot of money on. So can we improve the way we manage those kind of funds? Absolutely. And I believe this court will do that. But that's not gonna create a whole bunch of money that could suddenly be applied to indoor arena improvements. It just doesn't work that way. And I even heard one person suggest that we should sell the youth event center due to the cost of maintaining it. Because yes, frankly, it's in the red every year and the county has to supplement the cost of maintaining that facility. You know, I personally, I used to be a critic too of the youth event center. And, and I was concerned that we were spending way too much money on that until I decided to become a commissioner. Anyway, I've seen it and I'm completely the other way now. I, I see the benefits that that facility serves the entire county, but the biggest beneficiary are the kids. So anybody involved in the stock shows, FFA, 4H, they're the main beneficiaries. So I think, I, I just hope people better understand what that hot tax is all about. Personally, I think it's the best solution to the problem. And unfortunately, we are getting a lot of positive feedback as well and support for it. Okay, last item, in addition to all that on the SRPC, the 391, I'll talk about that later, and the hot tax. I've actually spent a lot of time working on a proposed amendment to the Texas Election Code to establish an option in which we would continue to use ballot scanners to tabulate and report preliminary results on election day, but have an option to conduct a complete manual count after election day, but well before the canvas. And the main point of the amendment is really to eliminate a requirement to pay volunteers because that adds too much cost. But, you know, we would be using the new Echo 65 method, which is a much superior method to doing any kind of a recount. And it would be done in an environment where there's plenty of time and secrecy are not concerns because it's after election day. So we'll see if that gets any wings. It's been sent to Senator Bob Hall, Senator Tan Parker, and Representative David Lowe, who are all leaders in election integrity legislation. So that's it. Sorry.
I believe you're pushing my pastor for the pulpit time.
Amen.
I won't be near that long. I did after last meeting, whenever Cory presented stuff on CISA, I did, had the provision meeting with Mark Del Toro with our 911 system and I learned considerable about, more there about that. It was just my lack of information on some of it and I still have a lack of confidence in the government, but as far as being able to get into our systems. But I'm gonna be more open-minded to looking and seeing what it can or can't provide. Again, the hot tax, I'm glad, going last has its benefits. Y'all have covered a lot of the stuff I was gonna talk about. Still in the burn ban, the, the rain that Don's asking to pray for. I will tell you, if it, if we can't get it, hit our recharge area. You know, it's okay if we're dry, but we need that aquifer to come back up. I did get to talk to Crystal Smith to, this last week about the, the big problem they have with the feral cats that we'll be addressing later. But following that, I visited with Reagan Givens that, that is working really hard on trying to come up with some solutions. I'm not sure he's gonna be able to come up with one that'll be palatable to everybody in the county, but we, we do have to come up with something. So I will look forward to hearing whatever the folks from the Big Fix have to say on that. And that's it. I'm gonna keep it short.
Okay. Well done. And let's move on to the consideration agenda. First nine o'clock item is 1.1, consider discussed to take appropriate action on a request from the Upper Guadalupe River Authority to use Flat Rock Park for the UGRA River Cleanup on July 26, 2025. Mr. Wilkinson.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I'm Matthew Wilkinson. I work for Upper Guadalupe River Authority. I'm kind of the, Tara used to handle it for, you know, many years, but now I'm the one handling the river cleanup. We've partnered with Kirk County on using Flat Rock Park for that location. I mean, for this, if, if approved, this will be the 13th year going. So it's a phenomenal location for us. We staged all the garbage right there by the boat ramp. City comes and picks up all the garbage at the end of the day and we just have a great, you know, socializing time where we get to, you know, enjoy some educational elements as well as food, beverage, just some entertainment and then a prize drawing at the end of it. And it's, we've enjoyed using that location. Last year, we had a bump in the road. The flood in July pushed back the event to September, but even considering that, we still had 373 volunteers who picked up over 4,000 pounds of trash. That's considerably less than previous years, but, you know, we, we had to reschedule last minute and all that stuff. So still a great success and we'd love to be able to partner with you all again to use Flat Rock Park.
Matthew, I'm pretty sure it'll be approved, so I move for approval.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second to approve the request to use Flat Rock Park for the UGRA River Cleanup on July 26, 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 1.2, consider discussed to take appropriate action to authorize Texas Parks and Wildlife Department contractors to spray arundo donax, am I saying that right?
Yes, arundo donax, yeah, that's right.
Arundo donax on Kirk County property. I got Mr. Wilkinson and Ms. Taber.
Well, Shelby's not here.
Okay.
So it's just me. But it's exactly like the item says, you know, we partner with Texas Parks and Wildlife for the Healthy Creeks Initiative, where we go out and survey and identify and we also partner with Kirk County staff to help identify and, you know, survey those different locations throughout the county where we have arundo. And then Texas Parks and Wildlife comes in at the end of the, that season, typically in falls when they come to, to manage for the invasive species. And then, yeah, they'll, they'll spray all throughout the county on private property as well as county property.
We do this each year, so I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department contractors to spray the arundo donax on our Kirk County property.
Yep.
Discussion? Yes.
A question, Matthew. I mean.
Yes, sir.
Have you gone back and actually looked to see how effective this spraying program is? I know we do it every year, but.
Yes.
The problem persists and I'm wondering.
It's, uh, there are some area, it really depends on the timing that we get the maps to be able to go out and survey. Currently, Texas Parks and Wildlife, this particular program is fairly understaffed. So, you know, they got one or two people working on the, the map updates and, you know, the, the spraying updates. And there are places where within a couple of years of spraying, it has done a very good job of, you know, getting that arundo patch size very, very small compared to a lot of these huge patches that we have around the, the county. So it really depends on the timing. It depends on the location of the arundo. It's sometimes tough for the contractors to get out to certain areas to spray effectively. And, and it just, it's a lot of moving parts that can kind of, you know? It can get watered down a little bit, but overall, you know, it's definitely working on some of the larger patches we've seen and other parts, it's still a work in progress. But it, we do get reports every year from Texas Parks and Wildlife on, you know, how much was mapped, how much was treated of what was mapped and so on, so.
And educate me, what is arundo donax?
Arundo donax, also known as giant cane. You've probably seen it all over the place. It, it really loves disturbed soils, especially maybe after a flood. It's, it's also known as carizo cane. It grows like crazy. It's a big water hog. It typically, you know, hugs riverbanks and things like that. Just, it, it soaks up a ton of water and anytime there's a flood, it can get washed downstream and it spreads like wildfire. And things like burning it, you know, that actually helps it spread more. It, it burns like crazy, but it also spreads it more. So it's, it's just an incredibly invasive species that's a water hog and we need to definitely get rid of it.
Right.
One, one of the reasons I kind of asked that question because it's related to what Texas Parks and Wildlife did last year, or at least I, I hope they did, was spraying for the lily pads that are on the river.
Right.
Because man, it's, it's really bad.
Yeah, I, I.
I think they did, but it sure doesn't look like they did.
I know that there were, we were made aware of the contracts that they had. However, we didn't really have any hand in any of that going on. However, I, I do agree, there are tons of lily pads, but it's mainly just because, you know, we don't get very many floods, at, at least the last several years.
And with the big floods we had, unfortunately, while the water was high, I thought maybe they did some good. And then when it receded, they're all still there.
It did a very small, it did a very small number on the lily pad, but yeah, there's still quite a few out there, you know? We definitely need some, just it can clog up waterways pretty good, you know?
Just ask you to, anything else that you can do to help in that regard would be appreciated by many.
We'll do our best, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Bailey, wanted to speak on this topic? Ms. Bell, you wanted to speak on this topic?
Alicia Bell, Precinct 1. I actually see a business opportunity with this. Arundo donax is also used for biofuels. They use it as reeds and, you know, woodwind instruments. They use it for plants, housing material. They can use it as like building material. There's a lot of things that you can use it for, but you don't have to poison it. What are you going to use to poison it? Are you going to spray it with Roundup? Do you know how many lawsuits there are with Roundup and the poisonings and the cancer that comes from Roundup? Do we really want to be spraying that in our water? Because you're spraying that, why can't you make a business opportunity out of it? Use it as a business, as a building material? There's a lot of different reasons to use it rather than poison it.
Any other comment?
Yeah, do you know what they use to spray? Are they using Roundup?
It's an aquatically rated herbicide. I believe it's glyphosate, but it's watered down to the point of, you know. I don't know all the technical details on exactly what they use, but it is aquatically rated.
There are 54,000 lawsuits.
Ma'am, please go ahead. Any other input? We've got a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Raise our hands.
Oh, yeah. Raise your hands. Everybody raise your hands, it's for it. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to item 1.3, which is consider discuss to take appropriate action to allow Texas Parks and Wildlife Department contractor to fill water tanks at the Hill Country Youth Event Center for the Healthy Creeks Initiative Program to manage giant cane, the arundo donax. Mr. Wilkinson.
Yeah, once again, just exactly like it says on the agenda item. They fill up at a couple of places. They fill up at the hydrant right next to where we are at UGRA. And then also depending on where they are in the county, it can save them time and gas to be able to just stop by Hill Country Youth Event Center to be able to use that water over there to be able to fill up rather than drive all over to just one hydrant and back and forth. So, yeah.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department contractor's use of the water tanks at the Hill Country Youth Event Center for the Healthy Creeks Initiative Program. Any discussion?
Well, just one question, Matthew.
Yes, sir.
Can I use river water? Not pure enough or sediments and stuff?
I mean, I mean, that's another question for another time. I'd have to, I'd have to look into that a little bit as far as any permits that might be required for anything like that for, you know, commercial use.
Okay.
But good question, good question.
We do that with VFDs, you know, and put the water back in. Take it out, put it back in.
For training, yeah. Otherwise, we fly fires with that stuff.
Right.
Yeah, we need to circulate the water.
We have a truck that can draft, was it 3,500 gallons in a matter of a minute or so? We could help it. The only concern I would have is if we're going to use our rainwater at the youth event center because I'm going to guess, knowing my tank is getting low, that those tanks might be getting low.
Right.
So, any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to a timed item at 9:05, we're running a little late, I apologize. This is to consider discuss to take appropriate action on a request from the Texas Hill Country Nurses Honor Guard to use the courthouse grounds on May 3 to honor all nurses in our community. Ms. Marshall, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Sam Marshall, and I'm the president of the Texas Hill Country Nurses Honor Guard. As some of you may or may not know, on May the 6 starts the week that we traditionally will honor nurses. The Texas Hill Country Nurses Honor Guard would like to have a gathering on the courthouse, I think over by the War Memorial, to honor nurses in our community. We will be giving out a small bag that has wildflower seeds that people can use. It'll be part of the ceremony to honor nurses past and present. Our organization is, the purpose of our organization is to give living tributes and memorials at funerals for nurses that have served our community.
I'll make a motion that the court approve the request from Texas Hill Country Nurses Honor Guard to use the courthouse grounds on May 3 to honor all nurses in our community.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Would love to have you.
Thank you, Judge.
But we need to take a vote, so those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Well, I voted yes, so.
Very good. We look forward to it. Next item on the agenda is 1.5, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve a resolution raising awareness of Peter Center's Meals on Wheels Program recipients and volunteers as part of the March for Meals Initiative celebrating 53 years of Older Americans Act Nutrition Program. Brenda Thompson is ill today and unable to make it. I've delivered Meals on Wheels every year. We've done this, it's one of the most important things that they do. A lot of people don't understand that in order for them to be able to receive and qualify federal funds, they have to have a public local government sponsor. And we're proud to do that. The county does that for Meals on Wheels. And so in her absence, I will make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item 1.1, no, I got to stop. No, we'll go ahead and do 1.6, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve adding family code 6.710 to the Notice of Final Judgment under miscellaneous fees on the district clerk's civil filing fees and adopting such schedule as presented. Ms. Lance.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. This is just something that needed to be added on to our fee schedule in order for us to collect the $10 when a final decree has been done.
And it's routine.
Yes, sir.
I move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve of the miscellaneous fees on the district clerk filing, civil filing fees as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
The 9:30 item is 1.7, consider discuss to take appropriate action on a request to use the courthouse grounds on May 26, 2025 for a Memorial Day event starting at 10:00 a.m. And also support from Maintenance, IT, and Sheriff's Office Deputy. Ms. Sanchez.
Good morning. So every year, we hold our annual Memorial Day event, which falls on May 26 this year. And we're requesting the courthouse grounds. IT usually records it for us so we could post it on YouTube. Maintenance is phenomenal with helping us set up and having a deputy so the courthouse is open for restrooms. This year, our keynote speaker will be City Manager, Army Veteran Dalton Rice. And Jeff Harris will be our emcee. Tyvee High School Junior ROTC will post our colors.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the use of the courthouse grounds for a Memorial Day event for the Veteran Services Office.
Thank you. Still need boots if anybody wants to donate boots. We need 37.
Well, the floor is open for discussion.
Oh, yeah, I was going to ask, how many boots do you, are you?
We have 51 right now.
So you, okay, you got to get up to 80?
88, yes, sir.
Just wanted publicly say that for those that are hanging on to their old combat boots.
We will return them.
Lend them and we get them back.
Yes, we're tagging them to who they belong to. We have a spreadsheet with their name and their phone number, and we will immediately return.
And I apologize because I was discharged in 1976, and I don't have my boots.
That's okay, sir.
Now, do stand corrected. Nikki Keynes is correct. Don't leave your dog tag on it because it has your social still. So yes, she was right. I was wrong. Thank you.
From the bench, you said that.
Well, in the military, our social security numbers are identified.
Right, I just couldn't believe he said she was right and I was wrong from up here.
I've been married almost 30 years, you learn slowly to say that.
Okay, let's take a vote. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
You know what I would ask?
Yes, sir.
Could not be quite as hot and sunny as it was last year. I think I lost five pounds.
I hope it's not either, but we do have, we did, we bought some fans. And we do have more canopies for, we're prepared for it, but I hope it's not that hot. We really hope not. It was 112 degrees.
These aren't going to be the little fans like we saw the other night in Washington.
We're going to have to do a little bit of arm work with it. But, but we do have some, so, and we'll have water as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.8, consider discuss to take appropriate action to accept the compiled financial statements from Kirk County Emergency Services District Number 2. Mr. Harris.
All right, this is routine. We do this every year with our ESDs, either a full audit or a compiled financial statement. And this is ESD Number 2, which is the Mountain, works with the Mountain Home Volunteer Fire Department. So I move that we accept this compiled financial statement from them.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to accept the compiled financial statement of ESD Number 2 as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. We've got a timed item, believe it or not, we caught up. We've got a break at 9:50, but we're not there, so we'll just keep moving right on. Item 1.9, consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to authorize the county judge to execute a contract with J3 Company LLC for bid items 1-16 in an amount of $488,454.25 for construction services associated with the Kirk County Bear Creek Road Reclamation Construction Project. This affects Precincts 1 and 4. Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Judge. On January 27, 2025, the court authorized issuing a request for proposals for construction services for the Kirk County Bear Creek Road Reclamation Reconstruction Project. Proposals in the form of sealed competitive bids were due to the county clerk's office by 2:00 p.m. Friday, February 21, 2025. The project generally consists of reclaiming the asphalt surface of Bear Creek Road into the existing base and subgrade, fortifying with additional base and replacing multiple culvert crossings. The limits of construction are Bear Creek Road, starting at its intersection with Shepherd Rees and going west for 1.2 to 2.3 miles, depending on the bid opening. The remainder of Bear Creek Road, approximately 2.2 miles, will be reconstructed by the Kirk County Road and Bridge Department in conjunction with this project. And once complete, all 4.5 miles will be resurfaced by the Road and Bridge Department with a two-course chip seal utilizing quality paving rock and oil. The lowest qualified bidder is J3 Company LLC in the amount of $488,454.25, which includes all of the bid items. So that would be all 2.3 miles of construction. The budget is $650,000 and is in the Road and Bridge Department Line Item 15-612-580, which if awarded, will leave a balance of $161,000. The county engineer requests that the court authorize the county judge to execute a contract with J3 Company LLC for bid items 1 through 16 in an amount of $488,454.25 for construction services associated with the Kirk County Bear Creek Road Reclamation Reconstruction Project, Precincts 1 and 4.
Make a motion to approve as read.
Second. Commissioners, one and four, motion and a second to approve executing the contract with J3 for this road reclamation project on Bear Creek Road. Which, and J3 is a locally owned company, which we prefer to do business with when possible. And the fact that it came in under budget is even better.
They are a local firm that is also a very high-quality contractor. They do excellent work.
They've been go-to for us in some emergencies.
That's right. Yeah, we're very, very pleased, excited to work with them on this project.
Good deal. So we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Charlie, is this kind of like we did Skyline Drive? Is the county going to do the chip seal or is J3 going to do the chip seal?
The county will do the chip seal.
And it's a two-court coat chip seal?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you have money for that in the budget? Is that separate from the $600,000 or is that?
It's separate from the $650,000.
Great, yes, sir, good. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.10, consider discuss to take appropriate action for the Commissioners Court to name two 40-foot wide privately maintained shared driveways in the YO Ranch Headquarters Subdivision. Ms. Hoffler.
Gary Edwards from the YO Ranch Partners applied through the Kirk 911 office to name two unnamed privately maintained 40-foot wide shared driveways. The first driveway name proposal is Nepal Lane Northwest. And the second driveway name proposal is Gunsmoke Trail Northwest. The two driveways are part of a platted subdivision called the YO Ranch Headquarters Subdivision that was approved on February 25, 2023. At this time, I asked the Commissioners Court to name the proposed privately maintained 40-foot shared driveway Nepal Lane Northwest and the other privately maintained shared driveway Gunsmoke Trail Northwest, and these are in Precinct 4.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the two 40-foot wide privately maintained shared driveways as presented. This is in the YO Ranch Subdivision, YO Ranch Headquarters Subdivision. Any discussion? We've got a motion and a second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 1.11, consider discuss to take appropriate action on adopting the IT Department Artificial Intelligence Policy. Mr. Tennis.
Good morning, Court. Corey Tennis, IT Director. Over the course of the last nine months, policy has been obviously a big review for my department. A lot of it was neglected or non-existent. This one policy in particular, you will have trouble finding any direct guidance, whether from the state or national level, on IT policy. So I'm trying to get ahead of this very common question that comes to my office on the use of AI. This policy kind of, or does spell out our view on how to utilize it. While I, while AI can be a very beneficial tool, actually putting it in policy on how we use it, sensitive information, you know, if it's not something you want out on public record, basically, don't put it in an AI generator. Once you do that, you lose custody of that information and subjects you to further scrutiny. So this policy just lays out what our approach is or our view on that.
Which appears to me to be pretty straight.
Yes, sir.
Which is good.
Yes, sir.
Motion accepted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the Departmental Artificial Intelligence Policy as presented, the IT Department. Any discussion?
Just, sorry to beat you. Well-coordinated, good training, needed. And appreciate, you know, getting ahead of this issue for us.
And this was reviewed by our county attorney as well as TAC, Texas Association of Counties, from their cyber division as well. And they're kind of looking to use this as a potential model for other cities and counties.
Sure, thank you.
Just two questions. So we didn't have a policy on AI prior to this, right?
It's tough to find any policy on AI at this time.
I hope you're not going to say it's tough to find any IT policy, but anyway.
There's several that are in generation, in draft form, yes.
So do we have any idea how many employees are already using AI to help them do their job?
I, no. Short answer is no. We can use it, we use it internally. But when it comes to, you know, department-specific sensitive information.
I'm just curious, I mean, I support the policy, so.
I don't have a rough, I get questions quite often on how to use it, if departments should. By all means, I don't have a problem with it. It's just once you start getting into sensitive information, then I would highly restrict that.
Understood. It's only helpful if you already know your subject matter.
Right, and the results that come out of it are in the 80, 85% effective. So it still needs to be, you know, reviewed thoroughly prior to publishing.
Improvements.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor of the new, proposed new AI policy as presented, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Okay, now I'm going to turn to, is it five minutes left? Yes, it is. Okay. Let me go ahead and call item one point twelve.
But it just shows that I could have spoken even longer in my opening comments, huh? All right.
You notice that we restrict you all to three minutes?
Okay, so getting on with agenda item one point twelve, which is an update.
I gotta call it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Item one point twelve, consider discuss take update on matters related to the H C E S R P C, the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission. Mr. Pacers.
Okay. So our Hill Country Energy Storage, Energy Subregional Planning Commission with Kendall County met on February twenty-eighth. We approved our February fourteenth meeting minutes. Those are now posted on our website. We appointed Linda Bullard to the board, which the court had already approved. So we officially made that, made her our landowner representative for a one-year term. She was also appointed as the secretary to the board. The board also adopted a board resolution against battery energy storage systems, which is now posted on our website. Commissioner Holt presented an analysis of best facilities targeting Kendall or Kerr County, at least to the extent that he is currently aware. And his presentation is now posted on our website for anybody who's interested. The board was informed that we have not seen any response to the coordination letters from either Public Utility Commission or L C R A. And we did start a discussion on questions to pose and experts who might be invited to testify at the eventual coordination meetings with those two entities. The board approves sending a coordination letter to T C E Q to ask them to come and, and talk to us, which that was approved. And that letter was also sent on March tenth. And it's available on the website. In terms of public comments, Representative Westfordell's district director, Barbara Ferguson, gave an update on the S R E C Energy Committee Symposium, which has now been rescheduled to March nineteenth from ten A M. to three P M. in the Texas Public Policy Foundation Building in Austin. Apparently, there are three panels, with the best being the last one for anybody who might be interested in attending that. Again, March nineteenth in Austin. The next meeting of the S R P C Commission Board will be this Friday, March fourteenth, two P M. right here in the courthouse. And unfortunately, the last meeting on the twenty-eighth was not recorded because our I T expert forgot to hit record. So we missed that one. We won't make that mistake again. And, and the draft meet, meeting minutes have been posted on the website. And of course, their approval will be considered in the meeting on March fourteenth. So that, that's it.
Okay. That's just a.
Just for information.
Information item?
But if there's any questions, any discussion?
Yeah, should that, should that not be listed somewhere towards the end of our court under reports and stuff from, rather than a agenda item? If we're gonna be, if we're gonna be getting at regular reports from.
Well, I think that's something we probably have to decide.
Yeah. Yeah. Just curious.
But I'll just say the idea was to create an agenda item so that the public could also speak and ask questions. And then so that we could have a discussion if you have any questions or want to provide direction to the commission. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'll try to be brief.
Yeah, no, the, the point is, is that if it's just strictly an informational deal, there really should not be discussion. But, but if you've got an agenda item like the next agenda item, then there might, would be. So I don't know. I'm just.
Yeah, well, I think if there's a clear action, that there would be a separate agenda item as we have today.
Correct.
But again, there can be discussion. And it just creates an avenue as an agenda item to have that discussion and back and forth, which you wouldn't get otherwise.
Have we decided for attending the best meeting in Austin yet as a representative? I don't think we have yet.
No, but we'll, we'll talk about that on Friday.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a ten-minute break. We'll come back at ten o'clock. We'll start with.
Thank you. Before we come back to order. What we're gonna do, item 1.13, is a very technical and very legal issue regarding the formation of the 391. And we're gonna take that up in executive session first with our outside counsel. So I'm going to pass that one right now and we're gonna move on to the big fix, which is the, we have, I can't get, I can't get there till 11 o'clock. Because we posted it at 11. So I'm gonna do some house cleaning things. Let's move on to the approval agenda. 2.1 is budget amendments.
Morning.
Morning. Okay. Everybody got their budget amendment?
There's eight of them.
Yep. Okay. All right, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, the second, to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? And they're presented just like this, so you can see it. Then those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 2.2, which is paying the bills.
The invoices you have today for consideration are $1,058,328 and 1 cent.
And those come to us in this thick packet right here. I'll move for approval. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand.
Our both.
Our both.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item 2.3, which are the late bills.
Yes, one for $6,440.
Jury fees. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, the second, to approve the late bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. And item 2.4, auditors' reports.
There are none.
Thank you. Then we go to item 2.5, which is to accept monthly reports.
Yes, for January 2025, Veteran Services Office Director, General Sanchez. February 2025, Justice of the Peace Judge Mitzi French, Precinct 1. Judge Hoin, Precinct 2. Judge Kathy Mitchell, Precinct 3. County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Nadine Alford. Constables Tommy Rodriguez, Precinct 1. Kyle Snyder, Precinct 2. Paul Gonzalez, Precinct 3. Brad Ryder, Precinct 4. Auditor's Office, County Auditor Tanya Shelton. District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, the second, to approve the reports as presented. Any discussion? No signal. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.6 are court orders. And I have looked those over. They're on my desk. I don't have them with me to give you the numbers, but they were all.
Want me to grab them?
Huh?
We got time.
Yeah, we do.
We got plenty of time.
Yeah, I started to see if you'd explain the monthly reports in detail, just to take some time, but.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
We, we can reopen the item.
Right.
I think we all get them.
So y'all didn't like that.
Shows you, I need to talk a little bit longer in the morning, first thing.
Oh, my gosh.
Maybe that we can limit our executive session time, when we're out before 11 o'clock, if we get in sooner, so that we can have.
Is Chuck gonna be on the call?
Yes. I'll let him know that y'all have an 11 o'clock item.
A good idea.
You'd like to come out for.
Oh, that would help.
Okay.
My bad, I misplaced them.
Okay, we can pass.
Well, I, I looked at them and I think there was only one small change.
And we fixed it.
You fixed, so.
We need the numbers.
I'll move that we approve the court orders as amended.
Subject to providing the numbers.
Well, let's see.
Does it have the numbers on there?
Yeah, it should.
So y'all know, we get these orders. All the rulings that we make here today are put in written form. They're then presented to the court to review for accuracy and, and content. And on this particular batch, we had one that we corrected.
Yeah, it was just the number.
And so we've reviewed all of these. And then what this is, when we approve them today, they become part of the official county record. And that can be looked up as to what we did on those, those matters.
I'm afraid not, Judge.
So we, I goofed. I own it.
I've got it here if you need it.
Well, when Jody's not here, things just go downhill.
You know the numbers?
There were two of them. Which, which one? It was item, she said in her email, it was.
Oh, I usually read them all.
Oh, you read them all? It was item 2.3 that.
That we fixed.
She fixed, right.
Yeah, but.
But you want to read them all?
Individual court orders.
Yeah, but we probably had a dozen or so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll defer that to next, next week, just next to, next Mr. Court meeting.
No harm.
Well. Let's move on to the information agenda.
Wanted to read them all, they're there. It's up to you. Maybe you have a totally different way to do it, but that's what she sent.
Well, it's court order number 41160, and then.
No, it's not.
Oh, you got just the individuals, not from this to that?
Well, if we can go to the end, we'll say through.
Well, that, that was the one, there was only one from.
That was the fixed one.
That, that was the special meeting without, to award the contract with Albert Martinez?
Yes.
Okay, then.
That was the special meeting.
That was the special meeting. Oh, come on. And this is the. That's.
This is court order 41140, which was the appointment of Linda Bullard to the 391, and then.
So you can just scroll down if you want. I see them all.
Well, let's just go to the end.
Oh, to the very end.
Yeah, that's through the, through.
I see.
Get there a lot quicker this way. Through court order 41158. And I have reviewed those and they appear to be in order, and I move that we approve those orders. Is there a second?
Second.
Here, we got a second. Any discussion?
Nope, thank you.
I'm sorry.
We did it. Y'all got it.
That's fine, now we don't have to worry about it.
Unanimous. Okay, moving on to the information agenda. Item 3.1, our status reports from any department heads. This matters?
Morning, commissioners and judge. So in review of everything that is going on in the changes in subdivision and the development in Kirk County, and how that affects our state obligated duties for OSSF, we contacted TCUQ about the process that the county, other counties are going through to adapt to these changes, and we found by adding a Section 9 to our current OSSF order is a relatively simple process, and we have initiated that, which includes a draft order to TCUQ for their review and approval, and then we would bring that back to the court to open it up for discussion and to set a public hearing. So I just wanted to let y'all know that we have done, started initiating that process, and if y'all have any questions, feel free to reach out.
Well, that's the proper process. Thank you. Any other department heads? Move on, move on to item 3.2, which are status reports of elected officials.
Are we gonna have the quarterly reports?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. 3.1A is the court report for public relations, and I talked to Lisa Walter this morning. She's sick and unable to come.
Okay.
And so we'll move on to the court report for Road and Bridge, Ms. Hoffler.
The beginning of my report, I have some facts that might be helpful to the two newer commissioners. Prior to the 1986, Kirk County ran under a precinct system, which each commissioner was their own road administrator. In 1986, Kirk County changed to a unitized system where you have a road administrator. You could also have a county engineer in that. Instead of having four road administrators, you have, in our case, you have one road administrator. Out of the 254 counties in the state of Texas, a lot of counties still do run under this precinct system. I've had other counties call, you know, and, and ask, you know, what I think about it. I think you get a lot of, a lot more consistency. You also are not overlapping equipment. And, you know, if you're lucky enough to live in an area that your commissioner knows all about road construction, you probably have an edge on another area that maybe that commissioner doesn't know all of those things. So. It's surprising, I don't have an exact number, but it's surprising that there still are a lot of counties that still run under that system. And I think, can't remember if it's Kendall or Gillespie, but one of those, I think, still run under that.
Gillespie.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna, you know, put it down, but I think really the unitized system, I think you get a lot more consistency in your roads because you have the same people that are working on, doesn't matter what precinct that it's in.
Of course, that assumes that we have a good road administrator.
Yes.
And I'm very proud of ours. Of course we do.
Well, thank you.
I think Kelly Hoffler does an outstanding job, and I have no complaints. So keep up the great work.
And Kelly, during the recent training, we did discuss that a lot with the other commissioners, and you could see a correlation between those that are not under the unitized system, had a lot of gravel roads still.
Yes.
Had a lot of individual graders per precinct.
Yes.
Right? And then we talked about ours, which are majority paved, and that equipment's very expensive. It kinda leads to a unitized system when you have to buy that real expensive equipment and, and then maintain it in a more economy of effort. So, thank you.
And to your point, when you have one commissioner that knows about roads and one that doesn't, they do take advantage of that with each other.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it's not, it's not a very efficient system.
It's not. And to me, really, in the big picture of it all, it's not fair to the taxpayer.
It's not.
On that. But one other note you saying as far as the road administrator, that also helps to have a really good county engineer. And Charlie and I work very closely together, and we work very well together. So I think, you know, he deserves.
And know that we like it.
Yeah.
And appreciate it.
We bragged on y'all the whole week we were out there.
One of the things I like about the unitized system rather than the individual precincts is it creates a better team atmosphere where you don't have the commissioners competing with one another for.
Right.
Money, equipment.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, just the number of miles of road that get built a year.
Mm-hmm.
To have it centralized, and when you go, if you, if you go out to Road and Bridge, you're gonna see they've got a huge whiteboard, it's about, all one wall. And they've got every project that they're, they're working on identified by precinct. And you can sit there and, and just study it for about 10, 15 minutes and see how that work is being evenly distributed. And we have a more cohesive court and countywide effort with the unitized system, I think.
I agree. I mean, I have tried numerous times to get Kelly to give Precinct 2 more work than Precinct 1. I do that all the time. But she always pushes back and says, no, I have to be fair and balanced.
Just so my people know, I tried.
We currently have five material storage areas, and that has been in the last probably five to 10 years a problem for us where we stockpile. Like today, we started a big rock order way out west. And so I think it was about 850 tons of, of rocks. And so, but we do have five, and those locations, our pipe yard, that is across from the Road and Bridge main office, kind of behind the Little League fields, that's one. We're gonna have a small area where the new animal services facility will be. We have an Ingram yard up on Highway 27 on your way to Mountain Home. And we have the Center Point yard on Kelly Street does not really lend itself to a lot of material storage. Apache Trace off of FM 479, we now have, thanks to our engineering department, we now have an area, and that is a really beneficial one because it's out pretty far.
We negotiated that one.
Yeah, and that, that was a good thing. I hope that we can do more of that. It helps everybody out there. You don't have to truck the material as far. Every time you move that material, you, you contaminate, and if you start getting a lot of dirt in it, it won't stick to the oil once you put that oil down. So you really kinda want, wherever it's gonna be delivered, you know, you want it as close as you can to that location. You're gonna pick it up one time in those trucks and lay it down on the road. But having to move stuff all over the place is not, is not a good thing. We also are looking, I think Commissioner Harris had mentioned last commissioner court meeting at the West Coranics, that there may be an area for us to be able to also put some material and equipment up at that location. Directing requests for the commissioners and for the public, a lot of people don't realize this, but it's not just Kirk County Road and Bridge. It maintains everything that falls within the boundary of Kirk County. So, you know, just a quick little rundown, you know, if it's got a number, it's probably gonna be a state highway. It's gonna be like Highway 16, Highway 27. If it's a farm to market, FM 1338, which is Goat Creek Road, that also is state. Our signs on our roads are green with white lettering. And then the city of Kerrville, they're blue with white lettering, and then they also have brown with white lettering, which is historical. And then they have for that Doyle district, they have the purple with white. City of Ingram is the same. It's blue and white. So if you see a road that has a blue and white sign, it's probably gonna be the city of Ingram or the city of Kerrville. Our roads that are privately maintained, if that sign is gonna be within our right of way, it's gonna have a red strip across the top, and that indicates that we do not maintain that road. So hopefully that kinda helps a little bit with, you know, where are you gonna send this request? I'll start on with my, my actual quarterly report. Bear Creek, Charlie just went over that. We're real excited to work with J3 again. Our chip seal program will start up maybe in April, definitely in May. It's all weather permitting, and the ground temperature has to reach a certain point, and, and we've gotta have consistency. You can't have it go up midday and then go back down. Because if you put that oil down and the, the road is cold, the rock won't stick to it, and then you have a big mess on your hands. The newer oil that we're using has a polymer in it, and that does allow you to put the oil down at a little bit colder temperature. They say that you can go down to 50 degrees. We've never tried it at 50, but we, we really like when it hits about 70 on that ground temperature. But we set out to do 50 miles of seal coat every year. We have five work areas. So if we, if each work area does 50 miles, I mean, you, you do the math on that, we, we get quite a bit done on that. Precinct 4 is such a large area that we actually have two work, two work crews to cover that area. All the rest of it is usually one crew, but you might have work area 1, and you might have roads that are in Precinct 3 and Precinct 2. So there is overlap. It's not cut right down the middle. We are on a 10-year cycle, and we have about 128 miles left to complete that, that list. And that list is, I don't think Bobby has added the four roads for Apache Trace in yet, but we're right around about 465 miles, and I think once those get added in, we'll probably be closer to 470. So to have 128 miles left, we definitely are on task, and so we've got three years to complete that. And then once we do, we'll start over. So now we're getting back to these roads every 10 years instead of, some of these roads were 20 and 25 years. So once you come back sooner, you shouldn't have as much brush to cut. Your ditches shouldn't have as much sedimentation that you've gotta recut and clean that out. So we should be able to get out there, get these roads prepped, and get them a layer of rock and a layer of oil next road. The longer you wait on these roads and they start to open up, then you get into this total reconstruction. And I bet you it's more than five times the cost. So our whole goal is to get back there before that road starts to deteriorate. We put a new surface on it that keeps the water out and all of that. So we are on, we are on task on this.
Before you get away from that.
Mm-hmm.
We adopted a 10-year plan to resurface all the county roads. And where are we on that?
We're in year seven.
Year seven. And we're up to speed.
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of people don't understand is Kirk County is the first county in the state of Texas that had all paved county roads. And that's something that we want to continue.
Yeah, there's a lot of counties, some of our neighboring counties don't have all their roads seal coated. So that is a nice, a very nice thing. I know the court remembered when they approved in our budget, our heating system in our shop went out, and it was, they were two big propane heaters in the mechanic shop. We bought that, that used oil burner for our heat. It is unbelievable, the difference in the shop. If you wanna come out and see it, it's quite a system. It's got a 250-gallon tank on it, and it takes care of all of our used oil. Yeah, it's a, it's a neat system. So if you ever wanna come out and see it, I'd be more than happy to show it to you. We are going to bring to court the Ingram Boat Dock Project for, to try to get approval on that. And we're gonna try to bring it on the 24th. We will be going to the public information request training on March 17th. UGR training on building healthy landscapes to meet urban challenges workshop. We sent two people from Road and Bridge to go to that on February 25th. We also are gonna be doing for our newer employees and for renewals for some of our employees, the LTAP 250 Work Zone Traffic Control and Qualified Flagger Training. That's March 20th through the 21st. This week, there's three of us that have to get our CEUs for our pesticide license, and Bandera has offered a training for that, so we'll be going to that to renew our license. Our new, new Open Gov program is moving along. That program is to track all of our assets, which include, you know, all of your signs, your culverts, your roads, all of that. We'll be able to track a lot better than, than we have. So that still is in the process, but we have started that process. Currently, right now, Road and Bridge is short for field staff people. When we're full, including administration and the mechanic shop, we have a total of 28 people. Flat Rock Dam, the graffiti continues. We cleaned it all up. We have a airless sprayer that worked really well and saved us a bunch of time instead of having to hand roll it. And I don't know how long it took, but they've, they've struck again on that. So I'm not real sure what we're gonna do on that. Mountain Home signs, we had a bunch of signs that were stolen around the holidays. A lot of people don't realize that, realize this, but, you know, one sign set up on a pole, just one sign. And we have some signs, or some poles that have multiple signs. It's about $300 for a pole and one sign and the hardware to put the sign on the pole, along with the concrete footer and the employee to go out there and dig the hole and, and put it up. So, you know, when you have these things happen, it gets costly, and I think we did an estimate for the sheriff's department on this, and it was a total, and it included the, the employee's time. It was $1,900 for this. So still have not caught that group either. Hopefully someday, maybe we will. Our capital equipment purchases, we finally did receive those six dump trucks that we asked for in a previous budget year, and we received those this budget. We received a Cat 930 wheel loader, two Bros brooms, one gradall. We are waiting on one Cat 150 motor grader, two 300-gallon oil tanker trailers. And we did receive the two John Deere 710P backhoes that I brought to court this, the last court meeting. We are planning another equipment auction, maybe sometime in April. If you remember, you guys probably saw the dump trucks that were lined up over in the Polo Field. We may try to do this auction over at our pipe yard. We had done some cleaning up there. We're not real sure, but we are gonna do another equipment auction. We did install a new entrance for Road and Bridge on Spur 100. This all got brought up when the Animal Services Building was being planned, and as far as traffic and getting in and out. And it was discussed that Spur 100 would be a much safer place to come out instead of. of four o'clock, all of Road and Bridge coming out of the parking lot onto twenty-seven. And that has really helped. It's, it's a lot better. We also did get the new above-ground storage tanks for the fuel. Those have been installed with a cover. With that, I think when Sylvia was, probably two meetings ago, said that actually our rate for insurance went down. And I think that has everything to do with that we put new tanks in and we covered them. Because those old tanks were probably at least thirty years old. So that was nice to have something actually go down. We did a cattle guard upgrade and relocation on Indian Creek Road in Precinct Four. It was a very narrow old cattle guard. So there is a twenty-foot one that's there. Mowing will probably start up in June. And to kind of remind you, now we have about six hundred and twelve roads and probably, probably close to four hundred and seventy miles. We mow two times a year. And remember, you've got both sides of the road. So if it's four hundred and seventy miles, it's times two. We try to wait, you know, and do it in June because of the wildflowers and things like that. Our paving staff went to Cooper Equipment in San Antonio for a two-day training for the chip spreader and oil distributor truck. This was May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. We are working with KISD regarding some solar-powered lighted crosswalks near Nimitz School, which is on Ranchero Road. We fenced a portion of the Center Point Yard on Kelly Street and also added a gate. And for those of you who don't, don't know this, we currently have nine, nineteen bridges that are part of the off-system bridge program. And that's a great program. The state is the one that provides the engineering every two years to go and look at all of our bridges. And then they rate it by a number. They work a lot with the engineering department on this. But when that number comes up for that bridge to be replaced because of safety issues, the federal government covers eighty percent, the state covers ten percent, and the county ten percent. The county can choose to do in-kind services. You need to get it approved, the project that you're going to do. But it's a great program to have that. And what really constitutes a bridge is your drainage span that you have underneath there. So if you have three five-foot pipes that would equal to fifteen feet, it's got to be twenty or more. So there's a lot of things that don't, would not qualify for it. But it's a great program. And every two year, two years, we, we get them inspected. Public Information Request Training is March seventeenth. Cybersecurity training, March twentieth. Let's see. The city of Ingram has two road projects going on. One is McNeil and the other one is College. We've gone over there because there was some issues with people trying to find their way to the annex and get there. So we went over and I think, we've done it twice, and I think we finally, I think we've got about five signs over there to, to help the public get to the annex. When we had the high winds on March fourth, we had some trees down that needed to be removed from the roadway. I wouldn't say a huge number, but we did have some. And we did have a couple call-outs with that. There's going to be TAC training, April twenty-second, that is for supervisors. And it's preventing liability. And I just talked to the two crew chiefs, and we're going to get a group together to, to do that training. And I guess it's going to be here in the Commissioner's courtroom. But that really is all I've got. And if you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
That's all you got?
That's all I got.
You know, Department of Government issued energy efficiency, they require five things. I think you've well surpassed that. Y'all doing excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from the elected officials? Okay. Then liaison commissioners.
I don't have anything right now.
Just a couple very quickies. Pleased to inform the public that the indoor arena roof replacement project, a notice to proceed was issued to Martinez Roofing and Construction, which they'll start the work on March seventeenth. And so we expect all the structural modifications and the actual roof replacement, including the insulation, to be completed really by the end of April. So looking forward to that. Otherwise, on the five fifty Earl Garrett modifications for that building, mustard architects and keener engineering have completed their plans. And we hope to have a final review with IT Maintenance and Guardian Security before proceeding to the RFP stage, that review meeting to take place this week or latest next. So we're getting close to being able to go out for an RFP on that project. That's all I got.
Any other liaison commissioner?
Yes, sir. Just one update for the Animal Services Building. The horizontal construction continues. No issues by the subcontractor and the general contractor. There is a, another coordination meeting. We've had really weekly coordination meetings amongst the Animal Control Services Officer, Jonathan Letts, to ensure that we are tracking. I've briefed Kerrville Pets Alive individually, make sure they're tracking on where things are going. And they have requested a little space inside that building for an office, so the court is aware. The only question that we have, and we're looking for the legal requirements on it, is a builder's risk, which was removed, especially before we go vertical with construction. And we're some coordination with support of Heather to determine that risk and who carries that. But that was taken out of the original statement. And that's it.
You think, you think else?
Nope.
Okay, with that, we're going to go into executive session to deal with item one point one-three. We'll come out of executive session, take action on that. We have a timed item at eleven o'clock. And so we're going to take a recess, and then we're going to reconvene in executive session. So y'all have to wait outside. And at eleven o'clock sharp, we'll stop whatever we're doing and, and take the big fix.
Would you call items one, uh, four point one A or four point two
Okay.
for that executive session, please?
Item four point one A is to consider and discuss and take appropriate action on the current state of the network and third-party vendor support, cybersecurity and infrastructure security agency agreement, and the Alamo Regional Security Operations Center agreement. That's with Corey Tennis.
Yes, sir.
And then four point two is an executive closed-session meeting to be held pursuant to the appropriate government code's provisions for the Commissioner's Court to consult with and seek advice from its attorneys regarding matters relating to the sub-regional planning commission between Kerr County and Kendall County pursuant to the chapter three ninety-one Local Government Code. And B, pending and possible litigation. C, matters relating to Kerr County responsibilities under the Endangered Species Act of nineteen seventy-three. And D will be any other matter described in this meeting agenda. And that's what we will take up when we come back from our short break.
Court will come to order? We'll come to order. It is 10:57, we've come out of executive session. I'm going to ask you patience and indulge us. Let us take some action that we need to take for coming out of executive session and then we'll get on with your time to vent. And so with that, I make a motion. This is on item 1.13 that I put off for executive session. We've talked to our outside counsel and we're ready to proceed. And don't pay a whole lot of attention to this, it's complicated. It's a bunch of legal formation documents that we didn't get done in the right order. So we're fixing it. So I make a motion that pursuant to chapter 391 of the Texas Local Government Code and other authority, I move to approve the execution of the Kerr County Judge of the interlocal Government Cooperative Agreement approved by the Kerr County Commissioners' Court on February 10, 2025, and Kendall County Commissioners' Court on February 11, 2025, for a subregional planning commission with Kendall County. And B...
I don't know if I said B?
Yeah, we don't need B. And that will authorize us to execute the appropriate documents.
This court will authorize you to sign the documents.
Correct. And this will authorize Heather and I to go ahead and complete this process with Kendall County.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
There is.
Okay.
Prior to this, I want to make sure that we're clear that this 391 commission no way impedes the ability of each particular commissioner to be able to deal with these besses as they come up. Because I personally have received another letter of another best that's being, and the judge is included in this, for precinct one. And it should be the action of the commissioner there to be the liaison towards that with the judge for those. And to be able to sit down, negotiate, and visit with these people and find out what their thoughts are, what their intentions are, so that they can then bring it before the court.
Of course.
But we want to make sure that we have a clear picture from them. Part of the email that I received on here is the gentleman put on here, "As a responsible developer," not sure about that, "I've navigated and have a ton of respect for opposition. In my experience, I've found that the opposition tends to be the result of poor site selection, lack of communication, transparency, and lack of community involvement and education." Well, I think there's more to it than that. You know, I personally have some other issues that would have to be high on the agenda for discussion. But we are going to have these people coming here, thus the reason for a 391 commission. And when we went to the VG Young, we met, the commissioners and I met some other folks there that actually have these besses in their counties. We cannot stop them from coming, right? Currently.
Not currently.
Doesn't mean that the 391 commission can't effectively do a job and get something there to where we have better legislation to give us the protections that we need. But it still comes down to their rights and they fall within the law to do stuff and that's the reason we have the 391 commission. But in the meantime, I think that we have to sit down with these folks as they come and discuss with them and find out how responsible they are. You know, are they willing to put in a barrier to protect our water source? Are they willing to do something to protect our air, our environment? We won't know that until we sit down and talk to them. So I just want to make sure that we're clear, the authority that we still have for our individual precincts.
Some are open for discussion with us and some aren't. We've seen all the varying degrees of that over the county line in Harper. They had a good get-together and discussed things, and others just tried to sneak in overnight or something, it seems like.
Yes, they do.
Anyway. All right. Now, that's clear as mud.
I think it's actually unrelated to the motion.
Well, but I understand what Tom started. Tom and I talked on Friday about this.
I don't think it is unrelated to the motion because you're talking about the powers and authorities of the 391 that you're asking us to vote on.
But to state it simply, the interlocal agreement that we're going to fix and the bylaws that we're going to fix are structured in such a way that we create a commission that has the authority to investigate and make recommendations.
Coordinate the plan.
And coordinate the plan.
We're very limited, actually.
And, but the commission still comes back to each county to approve whatever action might be taken.
Right.
And the involvement of the respective commissioners in your precincts, you're still the boots on the ground. If they're in precinct three.
Sure.
You take the, don't take the lead. You can meet with the developer. That's what we're trying to clarify here.
Right, right.
And it comes back ultimately to the court.
Correct.
So with that, we've got a motion. We've explained it to the people. We've got it on YouTube so that somebody can come back and watch it again if they want to. And we've got a lawyer on the line. We need to go ahead and take the vote. And you want a photograph taken of this, Chuck?
Uh...
Or is YouTube good enough?
Are you going to sign it right now?
When we're signing?
Get the vote?
We're not signing it yet, we're just voting.
If the vote passes, are you going to sign it right now?
No.
Or are you going to wait till it...
No, no, no. We'll do that after we get this passed.
Okay.
So those that are in favor of amending the, amending and executing the documents as proposed, raise your hand. Unanimous five zero. So we've taken care of that piece of business, Chuck, and you're free to go. We'll call you back when we get ready to sign all the documents. And so y'all know what we're doing. We're going to take a photograph of the execution of it, a date and time. We're into, some actions been taken by the commission and we didn't have the documentation, the formation documents executed in the proper order. So we're trying to fix all of that and ratify the action that's been taken. And looking at Ms. Bullard, we need to ratify that you're on that commission. So that's, we have to go back and make it legal. And for those that are wondering what happened, all I can say is we paid for a very good outside lawyer to help us with this and Kendall County did not. And they ended up having two lawyers working on this issue that were not talking to one another and we didn't, we didn't do this thing in the right order. And so thankfully, I can tell you it's not our fault, but we've got to be part of the solution and that's what we're trying to do. So that's what we've done. And Chuck, have you gone already?
No, sir, I'm here.
Okay. Well, we've taken the vote, it's done, and we're getting ready to go to our public meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and hang up your call. We'll call you back.
Thank you, boss.
Okay. Another day in paradise. It's refreshing to see so many new faces out there. As you can see, doing the county business is not as simple as it sounds. But we welcome you here and I'm going to go ahead and call item number 1.14, which is a presentation from the Big Fix Homeless Cap Project of the Texas Hill Country regarding their program and... regarding their program in the epidemic of overpopulation of feral cats and community cats in Kerr County. Ms. Burkhardt. I saw you in that T-shirt, I figured that's who you were.
There's a couple of them.
That was a great guest, Judge Kelly.
Ms. Sarah Burkhardt.
So I have a PowerPoint slide.
Yes?
So we, this is our mission statement. We're a volunteer nonprofit founded in May of two thousand and five. Our twentieth year anniversary, in fact, is coming up in just two months here. Our mission is to humanely reduce the number of feral and homeless cats in Kerr County through T N R, which is trap neuter return. The strategy is endorsed by a number of well-respected, respected organizations such as the Humane Society of the United States and Alley Cat Allies. So what is T N R? Trap, cats are trapped using humane traps and bait. We neuter or get them spayed, vaccinated and ear tipped. An ear tipped is a universal sign that a cat has been fixed. So if it gets retrapped, we know that we don't need to take it back into the vet again. And then we return them to where they were trapped. Why is it important? So depending on where you live at in the country, here we have three heat cycles a year because we don't have a lot of cold weather. Cats generally begin reproducing at six months of age, sometimes as early as four months of age. That would be comparable to a nine-year-old child. It's very young. Litters average four to six kittens. I know at Freeman Fritz two summers ago, they spayed a cat that was pregnant with eleven kittens. Cats have a two-month gestation period. So if you start off with one cat, within four years, if they don't get fixed, you can have twenty thousand. And I think that's one of the reasons why we're in the predicament that we're in, especially with COVID. You know, all the vets had shut down except pretty much Freeman Fritz. People were staying home and the cat population just grew out of control. So there are different colonies in Kerr County. You have some that maybe have two, three cats. There are a few that are over fifty, which is way too big. There's even one that has reached one hundred cats. An unmanaged colony can quickly get out of control. So is it really effective? There have been numerous studies done that have shown that yes, T N R is effective. I know someone had mentioned earlier that cats that are outdoors have a shorter lifespan than cats that are contained inside. This is true. Some cats can live up to twenty years if they're well taken care of in your home. Cats that are out, that are outside because of predators, disease, people, they generally live maybe five years at the most. So there was a study done, the University of Central Florida, over the span of eleven years. And after four years of T N R-ing, no new kittens were born and the population decreased by sixty-six percent. There was also a study done in Washington DC where they placed socialized kittens in homes. If a kitten is three months or younger, you can generally tame them. We do, when we personally find kittens that are, that are young, when possible, we try to get them out to rescues or adopt it out. And then we fix the adults, return them to the colony. So in this study, they were able, after seven years, there are only six cats left because of placing the kittens and getting the adults fixed. So Sequoia, if you can hold that up, I'm so sorry, I don't know why the font came out like that. But we've been around for twenty years and these are the numbers showing how many cats that we have spayed and neutered every year since two thousand and five we were founded, so we don't have the numbers on that. But from two thousand and six to this past year, how much we received in donations and how many cats were fixed each year. The past two summers, we had to discontinue vouchers because we ran out of money. We are underfunded, understaffed, but we have a very passionate group of people that are desperately trying to make a change in our area. The average cost to spay a cat, depending on which vet we use, is roughly a hundred dollars. It's a little bit cheaper to neuter a cat, it's about seventy. And so there's some common misconceptions as far as, you know, what is a feral cat really? So you have the term community cats. A community cat is an umbrella term for unknown cats that live outdoors, both ferals and strays. Then you have the feral cats that are free roaming, they are not socialized. They will scratch your face off given the chance. You cannot pet them, you cannot pick them up. They try to stay away from people. Then you have stray cats, also sometimes referred to as porch cats. They're also free roaming, but they are socialized. They're not owned. You often see these cats around apartment complexes because sometimes, you know, people will leave their cat. It's really expensive. I think one of the biggest problems we have here too is that the pet deposits are very high. And then when people move, they often move to a place where either they can't afford the pet deposit or they're in a place that says, no pets, one pet. So then what do they do? They either go to animal control, surrender their animal, or they dump them out somewhere. I found so many cats that were micro-tripped out in a colony and contacted the owner. And I said, oh, no, that's not my cat. I said, well, your name and address is there in the database, but they don't want to claim it, so we try to rehome it. So those are the stray cats that you see. Then we have domestic cats, they're socialized, they're owned cats. They belong to people, you know, indoor, outdoor. So one of the biggest things that we have going on right now that I keep hearing about are all the nuisance complaints. And there are solutions to that. What are the solutions? So I have had people contact me saying, I'm going to poison these cats, I'm going to shoot these cats. I don't like that they're spraying all over my house. You know, I understand how frustrating it can be. Cat urine stinks. And if these male cats are unneutered, they will continue to spray. Once they're neutered within thirty days, their hormones will, you know, change and then they won't be spraying anymore. But until then, what are we going to do? So there are different deterrents that we've had, that we put into effect to help some people and they've actually really worked. You can sprinkle different things around a home, vinegar, citronella, garlic to keep cats away, but then when it rains, of course, you have to reapply it. Something else that's cheap and last, they have these ultrasonic pet deterrents. They're about this high and it's like a stake that goes in the ground, twenty-five dollars off Amazon. There was a man in River Hills a few years ago and his neighbor was feeding feral cats, very kind, older people, and he said, they're scratching up my patio furniture. We need to get rid of these cats. And the lady was just devastated, she was emotionally attached to these cats. She said, I don't know what to do, Sarah. I said, okay, let me try to help. So I spoke to the man, I understand he doesn't want his nice wicker patio furniture scratched up. I wouldn't want that either. So he bought this device off Amazon and like I said, it's only, you know, about a foot and a half high, stakes into the ground and it covers a huge radius. It emits the high pitched frequency, so if the cat approaches it, you can't hear it. It's like a dog whistle, the cats don't like the noise and they leave. He tried it out for a few weeks, he said it worked. He said, you know what, her cats aren't coming over here anymore. They're fine where they're at. And so I know that there's also a situation going on with, well, actually, you know, a lot of places, but let's say specifically Billie Jean's. And so I had spoken to the colony caretaker a few days ago. I have a full-time job and a part-time job, so I haven't had a chance to go to speak to the owner yet. But I'd like to try to help her, if she's willing, to try one of those devices because I feel like it can help to keep the cats away from where the food is. I understand people don't want cats up when they're eating there, you know, for sanitation. Maybe they're allergic to cats, that's completely understandable. So I would like to offer that to her as something to try. And hopefully it'll work for that situation and the cats will not come up there anymore. So there's different ways to deal with feral cat overpopulation. You could leave them alone, ignore them. But that's when you get up to fifty to a hundred cats in a colony, that makes the problem worse. You can try to exterminate them, as some people have. However, there's something called the vacuum effect. So if you have a colony, let's say ten cats, down by the river, come in, that are not vaccinated, that are not fixed. So generally speaking, when a colony is completely spayed and neutered, they generally do not allow new cats to come into the colony. There's always an exception to the rule, but for the most part, they don't let new cats in. Relocation. So cats, within the past five years, there are six hundred cats from K C S, K C A S that were placed out through a barn cat program in Austin. We don't have a lot of people here wanting barn cats. We have placed a few. I would say with a big fix, maybe ten, fifteen within the past few years. That's not much, that doesn't help very much. So you can relocate, but it is a lengthy process. It takes three week rates. You know, it takes a lot of time, they still need to be fed, given water, they need shelter. So the best thing to do, when possible, for the most part, is to leave the cats where they're at. Special circumstances though, yes, they do need to be relocated, but that should be the exception rather than the rule. And like I said earlier, young feral kittens, up to three months old, can be tamed. So in that first picture during Snowmageddon, I found this little kitten over by, near one of my colonies. She was in the snow. I said, oh my goodness, she's probably not going to make it if I leave her out there. So I trapped her, that's her a few days later, snoozing in my lap. She tamed down very quickly and I was able to find a home for her. Down very quickly and I was able to find a home for her. So that was an extenuating circumstance where, you know, I took her out of where she was at and found a new home. The second kitten, cute little kitten, she stayed where her colony was, stayed where her colony was. She was spayed and she remained there because where she's at, it's a wooded area, she's safe. If we take a bunch of cats to K C A S, there's a chance they could be euthanized. You know, people are like, oh, just here, hey Sarah, they call all the time, come pick up my cats. Where do you want me to put them? I only have so much space, I don't need to take, I can't take everyone's cats. They might, and they might be euthanized, of course, if people, everyone is just taking in these cats because they're a nuisance. The alternative is we can humanely control them with T N R. Colonies will slowly get smaller by attrition. So attrition just means the natural order of events where predators, disease, cats are going to die off. They're not going to live that long. So eventually, the colonies do get smaller if the cats are all fixed. So why should you support the big fix? We are the only, and I repeat, the only T N R organization in Kerr County. We provide a free service to the community. We do not charge the public to sterilize and vaccinate their feral cats. We used to offer vouchers for domestic cats for people's pets, thirty to forty dollars depending on if it was a spay or neuter. But because of limited funding, we are just, and because of the overpopulation out, you know, in Kerr County, and we're trying to help control that, we're only focused on ferals now. Our waiting list is about thirteen hundred cats and it continues to grow. And that doesn't account for every cat in the county, those are just people that have contacted us. The only way to truly make a difference is to have the support of our community and our community leaders. And that's why I'm here today, is to, number one, create awareness that I absolutely realize there's a big problem because we get all those calls. And we are here to try to work with you as best as we possibly can to really and truly make a difference in the overpopulation. And we're trying to be proactive instead of reactive. These are the different vet clinics we partner with. Town and Country, Freeman Fritz, Hill Country Animal League in Burney, The Ark, and Hill Country Veterinary Clinic in Fredericksburg. So the picture at the top right, a few years ago, there was, there was a huge fire and the lady, I don't even remember, somewhere around twenty cats that she had and instead of, you know, they're like, she's like, I don't know, what do I do about all these cats? So instead of having animal control go out there, I went out there, took a couple of weeks, trapped all of the cats. I took one to animal control and I said, you know what? That's a lot to put on them. I can do my part to help the situation. And so out of all the cats that are trapped, and I was able to find all of them, I was able to rehome them on my own. So I think that we really need to come together as a community and instead of putting everything on the shoulders of the people in charge of animal control, if everyone else did a little bit of extra effort, we can make a huge difference as a community. But the big fix cannot do this alone. K C A S can't do this alone. Kerrville Pets Alive can't do this alone. The vet clinics can't do this alone. We have got to get together to help. So this is our big twentieth anniversary fundraising celebration. I just wanted to put in a shameless plug for that. It's going to be at Gravity Check Saloon on May tenth. They are one of our biggest supporters. They are, they love animals, we've gotten their cats fixed. The owner Slim and his wife Beth are fantastic people. They have made very generous donations to us. But if you can make it out there, it would be fantastic. And if not, I understand, but on that note also, we are desperate for donations. Even if someone can only donate ten dollars, it adds up. Some of the poorest people that I have seen that take care of cats have given me twenty-five dollars. And I know that that really hurt their budget, that was hard. That was going to be their food for the next couple of days. But they've made sacrifices because they really, really love these cats. So here we have our board members, we have our contact information. And I love to quote one of my friends here, she said, and it's very profound, if you love cats, you should support T N R. If you don't like cats, you should support T N R even more. So people who don't like cats, that's okay. You know what? Support T N R and there will be less of them. So within the past twenty years, we have spayed and neutered roughly thirteen thousand cats. Our money, ninety-nine percent goes to vet bills. We've bought a few traps, a lot of them don't work correctly, we WD-40 the heck out of them. I teach at Tybee High School and I've taken the traps there. One of the teachers is amazing and he's had the students work on the janky traps to get them to work correctly. We really appreciate that. But, you know, and also I wanted to say that, so I teach special education at Tybee High School and I also run the cat club that I've had for a few years. So I'm trying to raise future generations to be more responsible pet owners because if, like I said earlier, if everyone did a little extra, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in right now. And so I'm really trying hard to educate the community. But once again, we do need to partner together to, you know, ensure that there is a healthy balance in our community. And it all starts with education.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
And I did, sorry, I wanted to say one more thing because I really appreciate you gentlemen so much and I know that your job is absolutely not easy. So I wanted to speak Matthew twenty-five forty. And the King will say, I tell you the truth, when you did it to one of the least of these, my brothers, you were doing it to me. So God bless you all for trying so hard. I know you can't solve all of the world's problems, but I really appreciate you all doing the best that you can. Thank you so much for your time.
Before you leave, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I do support what y'all do and I think it's an awesome work. But when you talked about the colony cats, by what right do they have to put that on somebody's personal property without consent?
So I think.
You said you spoke to the person in charge of the colony over behind Billie Jean's and I've seen pictures of what they've done down there and they should not have been doing that. That's trespassing and they're putting structures up and all types of stuff.
So and it is.
Do y'all support that?
I think that it's very important to have open communication with wherever the cats are at. So where my colonies are at, I have spoken to the landowners to ask for permission and I have had to relocate a colony before and it was actually about two hundred feet away. Because where they were at, the gentleman, the owner, he said, no, I don't want them here, but if you move them over that way, it's fine. And so trespassing is. And so trespassing is illegal.
Yes, that's what-
And so generally speaking, yes, the cats have a right to life, but it is a person's property and I think things can be done in any situation that you can find a way to where the cats can still be fed.
Well, you can't control where a cat's going to be, but you certainly control it when you start feeding them and building structures for them on that location.
Right, and you can always move things down. So on that note, I do want to say that I did speak to city council a few years ago because there was a situation at Lewis Hayes Park where I, there was a colony of 21 cats, 20 orange and one gray and white, very interesting. But the gentleman that had been feeding there, he didn't get them fixed. They are all spayed and neutered now and by attrition, there are only 13 cats left. Not sure what happened to the other ones. They're natural predators. It's by the river, you know, we've had flooding, things happen. But there was a complaint saying, you know, we don't, and we had the, I gave him food dishes and some of the shelters that we make. So when it gets cold, they have a place to go into. We use like old ice chests. We put straw in there so they can stay warm. And they were hidden in the brush, but they said, no, no, we don't want it here. So I met with the city manager and came up with a solution. I said, what if? So Rainbow Journey originally had that colony years ago behind, well, roughly in that area. And we were able to get the cats to, it took me weeks. I had to just keep moving the food over and over, little by little, and move their shelters. And then they went back to where they originally were years ago. Everyone's happy, but I appreciate how they were willing to work with me to give me some time because they saw that I was working on that and then it's a win-win for everybody. I think there's always a solution.
Have we got Ms. Gail Johnson?
Thank you.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing me this period of time. I live here, my name is Gail Johnson. I live at 1260 Victory Lane in Vicksburg Village. We have 143 homes there. We have some people who are very passionate about their cats and some who are very passionate about their dogs because they like them. And there, some of them are very, are company for the people that are there. It is my opinion, having heard from the people who live there, many of them, that our problem is that although we have a great respect for those people who love their animals and who want their animals, we highly do not want them in our yards and in our gated, not gated, but our fenced areas and on our patios and pooping and peeing. Not everybody there is able to do the things that I think you all are very warm-hearted and wanting to do for the cats. I respect that. I also have that same in my heart for all my neighbors who do not want the cats there, who cannot take care of the cats, who see the cats going back and forth and in the mornings they're having, one of my neighbors is, it's just, they're just not able to take care of cats. And they're not able to take care of dogs. They don't have animals because they're not able to take them in their home where they should be, I think. And if you're going to walk them on a leash, even a cat. If you have and love a cat, get the cat, put it in your home, keep it there. I have, my two children have, don't live here. They have cats. They don't go outside. And if they do, they're on a leash because they have a respect for people also. I just have a little higher respect for my neighbors than I do for a cat. And I'm sorry that I would have to say that. But when it becomes where there's little harmony in a small area where people live and you have neighbors, I really, really appreciate the fact that the cats do not, and I don't care if the cat is feral. I'm a country girl. We had cats in the country. We didn't have neighbors, so that wasn't a problem for us. But I don't live in the country anymore. I live in a city. I have very close neighbors. They have their own problems. They have their own economy. They cannot afford, some of them, to pay for the feed and the care that animals take. You have to, something with an animal, I had a dog. It was very expensive to keep a sick dog. I had to take the dog for a lot of things. Same thing happens to cats. They get a lot of things happening to them, even just normal things. But they are a predator themselves. Cats will go and get something, very rarely eat it, but it'll kill it. And, and I know that as a fact. So I just respect those people who are this passionate and we have people who are passionate any other way. God bless you for what you're going to do. I don't know how you're going to solve it, but I do believe some kind of fining for some things when things are not going like they should. We have to have somebody who understands that. When should it happen? How should it happen? So that we don't have this repetition. This has been going on in our little community here in Kirkville, Kerrville, for quite a while now. And it's gotten to a very high level of, that doesn't need to be there. There's no harmony in it. And, and, and so that's all. Thank you.
One comment, if I can?
Sure.
I did receive complaints about that area. Coordinated a meeting with both our city code enforcement and Reagan to formalize those complaints so they can take action within the city. That is within the city limits and there is a very detailed city ordinance. I do agree, we have a public information challenge about what we can and residents should do. The big fix is a, is a great start and I assume that kind of level of detail is on your website. And we're going to follow up with some press releases as well on what you as a citizen can actually do and expect from our municipalities.
Thank you.
Let me make a comment. I've already educated this crowd that the counties do not have ordinance authority. We can't impose fines on anybody for that. But we do provide the animal services for Kirk County. And that was originally by agreement with the city. We no longer have that agreement with the city, but we still provide the services. Kerrville Pets Alive and Big Fix are partial solutions. It gets us to a better place than we are right now. And for those of you that don't know, my first year in office, and Commissioner Harris will remember this, I prepared a budget. I wanted to show the people, here's what we're constitutionally required to do and statutorily required to do. And these are the things over here that we're not required to do. Well, the county is in charge of providing for rabies prevention in the county. That is what we're charged to do. All these other services that we provide for animal control, and this was true of a lot of things. I identified animal control, I identified veteran services, which you usually get federal program. Here we do it at the state level. Identified all these things and almost got lynched, seriously. Because when I identified the things that, that need to be done, that we're doing, that we're not required to do, people wanted those services provided. And that's where Kerrville Pets Alive came from, is I challenged Karen Guerrero to put together a 501(c)(3) and offered to be the first donor. And I was. And look how successful it's been. What you're doing is magnificent. It's, it's, it's a path to some kind of solution. It's a lot better than where we are. And I want to know, what's the name of the little box that you put outside? What do you call that?
It's an ultrasonic, you know, I can look it up on-
It's just something that, that is, as, as local leaders, I'd like to know to be able to tell people, why don't you go get rid of these? That'd be the best 25 bucks anybody could spend. And, and, and it's the gift that keeps on giving. And, and, right? So I support what you're doing and I commend what you're doing. And it is going to take the whole community cooperating and collaborating to make this happen. And so if you want to try to put that together, get the KPA and KCAS, is that what we call it? KCAS? I'm in. I was in when we went through this with KPA. I'm in on this one. Whatever it takes, I'll try to put the people together to do what we can. TNR looks like to me that's ultimately the way we need to go. Nope, Rose has already got it up on Amazon. 25 bucks?
$45.99.
Oh, I can spring for that.
Found it for $29.99. It's a solar, so you don't need electricity or battery, solar ultrasonic animal repellent.
For 30 bucks?
Yes, sir.
If everybody did that, we would have better control of the colonies.
There's a whole bunch of them.
And it will make TNR a whole lot easier. What else can we do?
Have I used all my three minutes?
I think so.
Well, I had a conversation with Reagan last week after all this came up and like he said, you know, you couldn't build a shelter big enough to house all the cats. And if you built one big enough, you'd have to build again. There's, there's going to have to be some hard choices made with how y'all want to handle that and propose it to us. But that's a start.
Did you want to have the last word, Ben? Go ahead.
There's a big issue that has not been addressed. And the issue is, these cats, you know, whether they're fixed or not, are predators. They're killing rabbits, squirrels, geckos, and many other small animals and bugs. They leave fecal matter all over the place. They transmit taxoplasmosis. Cat scratch fever are susceptible to bird flu and rabies. It is cruel to cats to just fix them and let them out in the weather without adequate protection and with really inadequate veterinary care. They're subject to being hit by cars. They slide, they die a slow painful death from diseases. And if you say the colony is intact, no. As a colony declines, other cats come in because there's a food source available. So the colony, colony really does not decline. It, it brings other cats and it brings other animals to that area. We were named Bird City of Texas a few weeks ago. It is estimated to 1.3 to 4 billion birds are killed a year by feral cats. And it is mostly feral cats, not the domestic cats that are killing them. Feral cats also attract other animals to the area. Then that becomes the problem. So fixing feral cats, putting them back out in the community does not solve our problem. All it does is kill cats. It kills birds. It kills other animals. So to me, that is not a solution. To me, the, the solution is, we need a countywide effort to educate people to surrender their unwanted cats to animal control, not dump them in somebody else's neighborhood. People need to restrain their cats and not let them roam free. House cats need to be kept inside or on a leash. We need to catch all cats that are not owned and rehome them. Thank you for your time.
There's no action for us to take, is that correct?
No.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate your participation. And we're all in this together. Okay. So I'm looking at my county attorney. What do we have next?
We've got to go back into executive session-
Right.
For the rest, 4.2 and 4.1.
So we'll be adjourned for five minutes. We'll reconvene in executive session.
We're back in open session. And we're not taking any matters on litigation matter, right?
Correct.
So then we go to 5.1, which is action as may be required on matters discussed with you at the beginning of session. And I make a motion that we approve the IT department entering into a cybersecurity and infrastructure security agency agreement to update the state of the IT network.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed?
Yeah.
4-1.
I just opposed to CISA.
That's all right. Well, my issue on it is we've got substantive problems.
I know.
And politics.
That's right.
I don't need the politics on this.
They want to look into it, they can.
It's not politics, but anyway.
Okay. Next motion I make is that we approve the IT department entering into an agreement with the Alamo Regional Security Operations Center to facilitate the state of the network and third-party vendor support.
Second.
Got motion and second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, five vote. Any other matters that we need address?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we are adjourned. At...